Are you ready?
Yes.
Call Brandon Board of Education regular meeting, June 19th, 2023 to order. Can I get a roll call?
Jane Derry-Burkett, here. Rebecca Haines, here. Lisa Cameluna. That's not my name, it's not this right? Herb Robinson.
Here.
Kim Snackalaga, here. Hillary Staski.
Yes.
Jeff Sil.
That's not my name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You're fine. I always do that. Marley Stone. Nancy is over.
All right, let's stand for the first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then I just need a motion to accept revised agenda.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, accept the revised agenda.
Any discussions? Mayor Will Calvo.
Jane Derry-Burkett.
Yes.
Herb Robinson.
Yes.
Kim Snackalaga, yes. Hillary Staski.
Yes.
Rebecca Haines.
Yes.
All right, moving on to superintendent report.
All right, can you believe it? The school year is over. It's crazy. The answer goes up pretty awesome week, so many celebrations, many smiles, so many hugs, so many tears, just lots of emotions as we finished up the school year, the 2023 school year. So one way we're going to celebrate is to learn some more about our preschool program. So tonight we have our supervisor of preschool, early childhood, here to present to the board and our community. So Cassandra, thank you very much for coming with me.
Hi. Oh, you go back one page.
Not yet, not yet.
To the first page.
Right there?
Oh, that one.
Right there, okay.
So as Mr. Stone introduced, I am Cassandra Padilla. I am the supervisor for early childhood here in Brandon. So I oversee the programs of early on, which is early childhood special education all the way through age five, when the children enter junior kindergarten or kindergarten, whichever area they're going in. So I put together a presentation to talk about some of the things that we've done in our programs, that there are some changes that we're implementing going forward and some of the successes that we're really proud of. So the first thing I'd like to share that started playing a moment ago. This year we had a very large grant for our programs and we were able to purchase new furniture for the tuition-based preschool program, which had old outdated materials held together by fake nails, glue, you name it, and we're very proud of these new materials that we have. So I put together a short video just to showcase that.
Super cute.
It's very short, so. You can see all of the new dramatic play furniture in our kitchen areas for the children enjoying the materials that we have, some new stem materials within the classrooms. You can see the familiar faces that you have should come through our programs as well. So that was a little showcase of all of our new materials for classrooms. And now I'm going to talk about just a brief overview of some of the options that we provide at Brandon Preschool. So we have inclusive early childhood special education. And when I use word inclusive, I mean truly blended inclusive special education. So children with IEPs are working alongside their general education peers, just as they would as they develop through their academic experience. Half-day preschool program in the morning and afternoon, young three preschool for children turning three by December 1st, world preschool and the Grease at Readiness Program, which is Michigan's low or no-cost preschool program for families that qualify. This year we are instituting a new age entry policy. We've had mixed age groups in the past and we found that's not the most successful plan for our students. So children turning three by December 1st of the enrolling school year would be considered eligible to enroll in preschool if they're turning three after December 1st, they would then be eligible the following school year. And the reasoning behind that is that it aligns more closely with the age requirements for JK and kindergarten. So those children would then get two-fold academic years of developmentally appropriate preschool instruction. Children who are in early on would be able to transition at three years of age or at two years six months based on the recommendations of the early on coordinator. Our curriculum throughout the Brandon preschool is high school. High school is built around active learning, is play-based and child-centered. Research has shown that children learn best through play and we really strive to meet that goal and that standard. We're also a five-star quality rated corporate and state of Michigan. That's the highest quality rating you can achieve and we're very proud of that. Are you moving stuff around?
Well, I just didn't want that to block your view there.
My arrow isn't working now.
Oh. Try it now. Yeah, I'm trying to be helpful and.
That's okay.
Oh, my goodness, here.
If you want, you can just cross the next.
There we go.
Okay. So also a new change coming forward this fall is that we will be changing the times of our preschool service hours. Part of the reasoning, well, the biggest reason behind this is that if you've ever been in the parking lot at Harvey Swanson at arrival and dismissal time, you know that it can be very challenging, very hectic, and sometimes just unsafe. So adjusting our arrival and dismissal times will allow for parents and children to maneuver through the parking lot with less moving traffic. They will be able to enter the parking lot, park, bring their children to the door and exit the lot before the car line even starts to moving or before buses are trying to exit in the morning. And same story in the afternoon, before the car line starts to be able to make their exit safely through the parking lot. We do have a plan in place already to accommodate our students who have siblings in K-5 at Harvey Swanson and any students that ride the bus, including our early childhood special ed students. This also does not impact the DEA contract hours. You've kind of thought about it from all angles. I also have links at the bottom there, the preschool time change announcements. So if anyone would like to see that, that was sent out to staff and families already. And then will be distributed to families at Danville going forward. Another thing that we've started in the preschool this year is increased communication to all of our stakeholders. So most importantly, our families are our biggest asset in preschool. So they get a lot of communication from my office, they get a weekly newsletter, the preschool post. They also get individual newsletters from their classroom teachers, they get communication via CSO and then other important announcements are sent by email as well. Parent engagement moving forward, we're looking for increased opportunities for families to participate and be an active member of their school community. We know that in preschool, that's the framework, that's the ground, foundation level experience going into school. So we really want to build those positive relationships. We create intentional opportunities for families to come into this school, including events like literacy day, muffins with mams, our donuts with dudes event. You might have seen some pictures in there. And then in the fall, we are starting a STEAM day, so it's going to focus solely on science, technology, engineering, all of those great merits. We're also going to be starting a parent-teacher collaborative group. At Harvey Swanson, the PTA does not extend down to preschool level and that's just the rules of the association. So in order to bring families in and have them be a more substantive member of their school community, we're going to create a parent-teacher group. I'm very excited about this because then I get a little bit of help and support when planning big events and coordinating things like volunteering or hand raises in the future. Last thing I want to talk about is community partnership. In the preschool, we really strive to help children develop a strong sense of self-identity. And in a community, that includes being a member of their community in the small scope of their family, their school and outward from there. So understanding how they fulfill their needs, how they connect to each other. Some of our best community partnerships that we currently have, we city the Brandon School District. We do our transition days at Harvey Swanson and at Oakwood. We also have plans next school year to visit the wood shop at the high school and our preschool students will get to build some things alongside high school students. The Brandon Township Library, you can kind of see on the top left corner, Ms. Fran, her very valued member of our community who comes to the preschool or makes opportunities for our preschool students to attend the library to do an event every month. Also, the Oakland County Health Department and Delaney Dental Group provide hearing, vision and dental screenings throughout the year for our students. So just looking forward to next year where we can touch our community even further and kind of extend our reach and just continue creating high-quality opportunities for all of our little students in Brandon. And that concludes my presentation, so thank you. If anyone has questions.
Thank you, that was great. Nice, that was really nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so can I get a vote of consent agenda? Get a motion?
Send the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
I did.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. No, it's okay, it's okay.
Do you want to plug a bit or?
Well, we need to do public comments first. That was first, I'm not jumping. I'm sorry, I accidentally overlooked that, I thought it was okay. And I'm sorry. It was too. Okay, so we got public. Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
What agenda is in session this time?
Okay. These are, okay, okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, these are not on agenda business, so we will do those public comments at the end. That's when we do public comments, not on agenda business. Okay, so now a pool of consent.
Okay. Both the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
And Rebecca?
Yes.
All right, now information and discussion items. For the part, we don't have to relay anything right now, the part, we are working through our policies. We're almost done, that's very exciting. We will have that by the end of the summer, before the end of the summer, next school year. Now, finance report.
Good evening. Being required by law every year to have some public budget hearing, which includes our truth and taxation hearing, part of the budget hearing. So tonight we're going to talk about the summary. I've given each one of you the detail and the detailed budgets for the final one for this year and next year's budget. It's got detailed lines on imperative higher years by function, it's got assumptions. So all the details are in there, so feel free enough to ask me a question. I've taken that information and tried to summarize it, so I'm not here for three hours. So let me get started. What we're going to talk about tonight, it's the taxation hearing, the general fund, student activity fund, our settlement purchase agreement, energy bond, debt funds, food service fund and childcare fund. So on our property tax levy, for non-homestead tax levy is levied on all its business crews and rental properties that types of properties, it's not levied on a taxpayer's primary residence. So in the state of Michigan, it's expected that you levy 18 mils, we're a little bit under that because of a rollback. So we levy 17.8760 mils, that's no change from prior years. Our non-homestead property value in the community is currently for this year 166 million, a little over that, and that increased 5% or 7.5 million from last year. The debt levy is levied on all property. Where there's no change here, 12.16 mils, that's we've been at that levy for the last two, one, three, four years. Getting taxable value in a community, 737,664 over 35, and that increased 7% from last year. So that was a big increase on the property values in the community. So I just, I like to give everyone an idea of what the levy represents. The operating levy, like we talked about, 17.8706 is all non-homestead and the expiration on that levy is 2024. We have five bonds and refunding bonds that comprise the 12.16, and this is a list of them. 2016 refunding, 2018 refunding, 2019 refunding and 2021 refunding. All of these refundings saved us a lot of money. We were able to refund prior bond issues and prior borrowings. This will fund one fund for a much less, much lower interest rate, saving less than what it was like somewhere like 11 million, a very high number. So all of those and the expiration date totaling our principal standing on the bottom line there, 97,850, and again, 12.16 mils. In the far right column, I'd like to point out the word 2024 and then 2025, two of those bond issues will be done and paid off, so that's good news. Next slide. In order to create any budget, we sit down, I sit down with the superintendent and others in the district and we look at assumptions. And our revenue assumptions this year, the state has not given us our final number, but we chose to go with the governor's proposal, $458 per student. Again, this is the best assumption we had. Our enrollment decline, we expect to lose about 50 students, hopefully that's conservative, hope that's less. But we always look at our incoming kindergarteners versus the outgoing seniors, graduating seniors. Our P-18 increase, that's our special ed money that we get from the county, Oakland County, is going up this year, which is good news, it's been going down, but it's up 53,000. This is a big one, the interest earnings, 215,000. I looked it up, in 1920, we earned 48,000. So we're actually, you know, we're doing well with the interest rate there. Food service transfer for next year, 50,000. And this one, I want to explain real quick, the federal SFR budgeted. So 1.1 million, that's revenue and then that's also we're going to see the expenditure. And this is the last year of that SFR money, the 23, 24. So that's a big number that's in our budget, so it's in there revenue and expenditure. And then the reduction of MIPs, there's our retirement fund. We had a one-time payment this year, 1.18 million. And again, that's not in next year's budget. So if you look at comparisons, our revenue is going to look lower and our expenditures are going to look lower, but it has to do a lot with this one-time funding, is the best way you can explain it. So that's our revenue. Expenditures, we have $100,000 in the budget for Capital Hot Lake. Our security in the district and our SRO, a little over $500,000, we budgeted. Personnel increases, we budgeted 600,000. Our teacher net cost decrease of 250,000, we have four teachers that are retiring that will not be replaced, will not increase class size, it's the way the students are rolling up. Again, that SFR funded items of 1.1 we saw in revenue, we're seeing it on the expenditure. And then that reduction of MIPs is the 1.18, 1.1 million. It's not in next year's budget. Additionally, our medical costs are going up about 4.1%. Next year, our general fund IPA energy bond payments, 414,000. Our first student contract's gone up about 40,000, but we're going to save 62,000 because we bought buses and we don't have to lease our student buses. That was a real help for us. Our property liability insurance, I put this on here, I usually don't, but this blows me away. It's 243,000, I mean, this is such a big increase. We used to pay maybe 125,000, so it's not that we kept things. For whatever reason, our property liability insurance is really going up. And the board chose to make an investment in our custodial contract, so that's 191,000. That was an additional extra budget. And we do have a full staff and a really good supervisor, so we think this is going to be a good thing. So just as a final analysis of the general fund, we're projecting an operating surplus this year, 22, 23, 151,240, right now, based on all those assumptions. And operating surplus next year, 75,364. So our total fund balance at the end of this year is projected to be 4,350,000 or 13.76%, and then next year, 4.4 million or 14.67%. The board still, several years ago, adopted a resolution to assign $2 million in fund balance. Some of you that run the board several years ago will remember that. We can, we may need to talk about that another time, looking around, and maybe if you were here when we did that. That was because there was no bond, there was no way to fund any type of big projects, so that assigned fund balances still sits out there, $2 million. So if we look at our unassigned fund balance, that's 2.3 million at the end of this year, or 7.42%. And then next year, 2.4 million, 7.87%. So yeah, that's the unassigned versus the assigned fund balance. Any questions on this before I go forward? The general fund. Student activity funds, we're now required to talk about these and the board is required to adopt budgets for our student activity funds. Those are fundraising accounts, we have 160 of them. These monies roll over year after year, has nothing to do with general fund, but they're all accounted for separately. Last year, our bought-in to fund balance, we had $456,000 in the fund. So we're not, we're saving, we've been saving over many years. This year, projected to actually increase that to 473,828. And then next year, I thought, well, maybe we'll spend a little bit more, so I put it down about 456. And again, that's student council money coming in, it's robotics, it's every, every fund you can think of, like those interest building fundraisers, so that's healthy fund balance there. Our non-voted debt capital fund, I want to also talk about these funds. Four years, five years ago, we started, we have these IPA energy bond payments every year, about 400,000, and those are general fund obligations. So we made a decision to transfer excess fund balance into a new account, the non-voted debt account. And what that's doing is it's a little bit of, it's funding, so in case we have a bad year, the state doesn't give us the money we expect to get or we lose more students than we would expect to, or something on the financial side isn't going as well as we thought, we can transfer this money back into the general fund to make those payments. So it's just, it's a good way of protecting ourselves from a bad year. And again, the board voted, we have resolutions that voted that we would transfer this money. We didn't do it last year, we're not doing it this year, but that's 1.7 million dollars, roughly four years of payments on those energy bonds and IPA. So that you can see, that's all staying the same, 1.7 million for this year, next year. The bail-in proceeds, that capital fund, we're going to end the year about 357,000. I'm sorry, last year we ended at 357,000, this year we're going to end at about 21,000. I committed to spending that, we spent most of it, you know, throughout the year. Several things with that, the tractor, we find several things, shopping equipment. Food service, we have had no price increase since 2018, 19. Before that, it was 2013, 14. So about every five years, we are not proposing any sort of price increase. We have a healthy fund balance in our food service. Just as an FYI, our elementary lunch cost is $3, it's for a hot meal. And at the high school and middle school, 3.5. But we all know that the cost of food has risen dramatically, but we've been able to hold costs down. Primarily, we've been getting some extra federal money in our food service fund. So we're looking at, at the end of this year, an operating surplus of about 63,000. Next year, looking at an operating deficit, we do have some increases in the food service fund. But if you, the middle category, the projected fund balance at the end of this year, over 700,000, that's a really big fund balance for food service. And again, the federal government, we received a lot of extra money during COVID and even this year, we received some extra grant money. So the food service fund will transfer this year, 75,000. Several times, we've been doing that for many, many years. And then next year, I lowered that a bit to 50,000. But again, we will be doing an amendment for next year's budget, so that changed. Childcare fund highlights, Cassandra spoke, I actually just give some little bit of details about the program. We do want a robust HTE program, 6:30 a.m. to 8:30 in the morning. And then in the afternoon, 3:30 to 6 p.m., charge $6 an hour. Right now, Penny said we have about 55 average weekly examishish summer. About before school, about 35 students, after school, about 33. Bush and preschool this year is 102 students, it's not full-time, some students come less. And then this is the big one as well, federal revenue, as Cassandra mentioned, to this childcare program this year, 519,348, that's huge, I've never seen anything like that. So it really helped us to be able to purchase furniture and things for the kids. Projected federal revenue next year is zero, we have no, we, we've been told all of that money is gone. But the good news is, our fund balance is really going to, it's very healthy. Looking at operating surplus this year, 274,000. But then that's going to flip next year because all this federal money is going to be gone. 165,000 deficit perhaps, so being a little conservative. Projected fund balance at the end of this year, 482,000, next year, 316. And the operating, the general fund does not supplement any money to the childcare fund. But that's all the news. Cassandra and I will be working on these numbers as the students enroll and making sure on top of what the childcare fund balance is doing. So this one, I was hoping you could see better, but it's on the last page of your report and this is something I've been doing throughout the fall. And it really, it's a snapshot of our revenue. And it really, it's a snapshot of our revenue over the last ten years. What we project this year, what we project next year, and even going into twenty twenty-five. So if you look at the bottom of the net surplus, you can see those numbers, you can see fund balance numbers, uh enrollment numbers. We're in the red on the way bottom, how many students we've lost, um per people foundation, and how much money we receive from the state. It really tells on this one spreadsheet, it tells a story of our finances for the district and comparing it to um the prior years. And I just added, next year is due five years out, and we'll do that next year. But if we look at twenty twenty-five, we've used this um to project and to help us see where we may need to make reductions. So as you can see for twenty twenty-five, not to be alarmist, because we'll make sure everything's balanced. But right now, we're looking at a fairly large deficit, and that is because the federal money is, the cliff is there. So what we need to do is we'll figure out, uh some of those federal expenditures. We'll put in other grants, we do have thirty-one A money, and then we'll figure out what, you know, some other things, if we can continue, continue with um other. Like permanent building subsidy, but probably will go into general fund, but that's something that we've been able to fund of the S R money. Um there's other positions, so it's just a good starting point, um until currently, I mean, probably start November. So just start looking at this, seeing where we're at, to make sure that we come up with a plan to um have a balanced budget next year. That's, that's always been our um charge to do that. So um that's really, that's really everything I have, um if you have any questions. Like I said, you know, feel free to call me and think of something after, and make sure everybody understands, especially going to, into next year. We have a little talk, we've been fortunate the last few weeks with federal money, but let's go. Okay, well, thank you.
Education report, Carly's gonna put on another pad.
Um so while Maria is playing that up, I'll just speak to this, um so we're gonna talk about section ninety-eight B. It's a report that we're expected to complete um through the Michigan State of Education, Michigan Department of Education matter. Um it's all because of our S R grants and all, coming out of COVID, we were issued so many funds in a variety of capacities. To help support learning laws, compared about the word learning law law. And so to ensure that districts are monitoring what they're doing with those funds and how it's um supporting the academics um for the district. Um we are required annually to complete this report, last year, we did the report, it was completed in a call and then in the end of the year, you might remember. Now that you see the template, it might bring back some memories. Um and again, we're following the same template, and the template is the template that is given to us by the Michigan Department of Education. So we didn't make anything out there, we're just uh filling in the blanks, so. Maria, when you're ready, I'll go through this with you.
Yes. PowerPoint here.
You had a master navigator over there, there's a lot going on.
Let's try this again.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Sorry, you spoke to this, so what is the report, what's its purpose, and what does it measure? I'll speak more to the what does it measure, so. You might hear about what percentage of students are getting compared to the national norm. You might know, you might hear things like whether you might propose projections target, that they grow in the classroom as much as we expected them to uh this year. But the study requires that we use certain tools in order to fill out this report, N W E A is one of them, and so that's why we use our N W E A. To complete this report, and what it does, it measures growth, so students can get a bit of space in the fall versus um at the end of the school year. And so we had to set goal in order to submit and have this uh template complete, obviously. And our goals in the Brandon School District, because we're all students, regardless of the area of math, math performance. Uh within the Brandon School District, um as measured by N W E A throughout the school year. So if those of you in the audience are college students, you'd probably be near, but at one of those big old telescopes, that we used to kind of look at this. Um but essentially, uh what we're looking at here is the percent of students that are at the norm. In the fall and reading your math compared to the spring, so when I say they're at the norm, what does that mean, right? And so, um what happens with N W E A, they test millions of children all across the country. Um to determine what's the norm, what's the average of our students uh in the school district, uh or in the country in terms of performance. And so then they take all other districts and look at their data, and they compare it to that national norm. And so if you look here in kindergarten, for example, in the fall in reading, uh sixty-eight percent of our students were at that norm. Uh meaning that they were at the average of the nation. And then if you look in the spring, we had sixty-four percent, and if you look at in the fall in mathematics, you'll see in kindergarten, that was seventy-two percent. And then in the spring, seventy-one percent. Um some items to highlight on this page, particularly is seventh, or second grade reading. Um I want you to know that that's where we spent a lot of our time with our early literacy model, um you know, our literacy specialist, Annie Moller. And we have our uh reading intervention, our reading interventionists, reading specialists. That are specifically focused on supporting our students prior to getting into third grade. Uh you'll see a nice jump there, forty-two percent to fifty-eight percent. And then when we look at math, uh in third grade, we see a jump there. Um but overall, in speaking to this data, we do see a decline, uh most specifically in the area of mathematics, and I'll talk to that. And then um at the bottom of the page that you have in front of you is our middle school uh data. Um you can see here that um when I compared the data to last year's data, we saw um some growth in our sixth grade of the money that we had seen in the years past. So what's really nice about this um report and the data that we gathered, the state actually makes all of our data, we submit it to the state. And then they kind of pump out to us, um all of our demographics and subgroups, our grades are looking such. So essentially, to be fair to the room, I pulled those reports up from M D E and I put them in this template uh to submit. Uh but I think it's important here to take a look at this, because the first set here particularly speaks to our demographic data. So you can see um, you can see all students, and you see special education, English learners, female, male. All of the subgroups that we have here within our school district, and you can see there's quite a few. What this particular chart speaks to is the percent of students that are considered to be significantly behind grade level. Um in the school districts, and so N W E A uh tells us their definition of significantly behind is if they're more than a year. Behind in their grade level context, um that's the definition of significantly behind. And so um so areas that um that are noteworthy in this discussion, um areas that we need to. Uh spend some more time on, special education, English language learners, African-American students, and then Hispanic or Latino students. In all of these areas, we've seen a decrease, we've seen less students be significantly behind in grade level in all of these categories. Um that is something that I would expect to see, we work really hard, we got a lot of good people in the district, doing a lot of good work. And so the good news is, we're seeing that payoff. Um there are some particular subgroups who are not seeing the decrease in the same way as some other subgroups. So that's something that we need to be thoughtful to as a school director. When I look at the next set of data that's coming through, this speaks specifically to grade levels. So what I just spoke to was demographic groups, now this goes kindergarten, first grade, fifth grade, and across the board. How did they come in in the fall compared to where did they um end up in the spring? Um and so you can see here, again, in all categories, um that our students are less behind. At the end of the school, we have less students considered that, considered to be significantly uh behind grade level when compared to being in the fall. Um something that I do want to mention here specifically, uh when I did our comparisons last year. We spent a lot of time talking about middle school data last year and the need for some multiple intervention. We talked about the implementation of A A R I as well as math labs. Um we have seen a decrease here in these areas in uh seventh and eighth grade particularly, which is where we spend most of our focus. This year, um this is um, this is different than last year. And so I believe that having those programs in addition to a lot of other data that we've been reviewing. This is the nice piece of data that supports the fact that those programs are having an impact in the building. Um because last year, we didn't see um uh as much of a transition, as much as, as much of a change there. And then lastly, we are required by the state, as I mentioned, this is all uh relative to COVID. They've also asked us to measure how the students compare to those that are in person versus those that are remote and online. And so, as we've spoken about many times as a board, uh students that perform in person. Uh you know, perform at a much greater rate than those that are typically online. Um this data continues to support that information, those that are in person. Uh we see um that less of them are significantly behind where in the remote setting. Um that's a larger number, but they not have the numbers to compare to in the fall. But I think it's important to mention in the remote section, when you see twenty percent, I want you to know that was five kids, or one out of five kids. And when you look at that fifty percent number, um we got six children in the entire category, and three of those were considered significantly behind. So in that case, I think the numbers matter, because it's a pretty small sample set. Um but so in reviewing this data, um our instructional leaders group, we meet, you know, every month. This data does not come to any surprise that anybody missed me today, because this is what we talk about day in and day out. We have already met to discuss our goals for planning for a coming school year. We will continue to review this data, we have some new instructional leaders that will be joining the group, we have some movement within instructional leaders. Um ranks, um so this will be data that continues to be at the forefront. Uh we do, we're already having discussions about intentional planning for mathematics across the system, K twelve next year. Uh we worked really hard to focus on reading, or anything that, or we've seen progress there, we have less students right now. Um that the M D E identified eligible for retention this year than we did last year. Um so these are things that are telling us that things are moving in the right direction, we spent a lot of time focused there, which is wonderful, that's. That's, that's a really important thing, that's how we should have been spending our time, but we're noticing that math now needs some support. And so we are discussing K twelve, um strategies to improve instruction across the district. Um look forward to sharing those with you, only meet again in July. Um the other thing that we need to be intentional to is supporting our demographic subgroups. Um I mentioned earlier, there are specific subgroups that look a little different than others, that need some more additional support. So that's gonna cause our instructional leaders to be, uh to be really intentional about coming up with strategies. About supporting particular students that fulfill those categories. And then lastly, all of those will fall into our district improvement goals and plans in terms of school improvement. I look forward to sharing those with you in our July fourth meeting. Any questions?
I, I have a question, so when we're looking at the data on the first page where it says like fall test scores and spring test scores, when are the? So like if I look at second grade, for instance, for those that are at, in the spring, in second grade. For the reading, it's fifty percent, and then we jump up beginning a third. Is that, do we know like what attributed to that number being lower in the spring and then higher at the next fall?
So just, uh so this is not a cohort data, this is just third-year straight, this is just third-grade straight. So I would have to pull last year's second graders.
Okay.
Right, to see what that dark was, you know what's interesting, sometimes you see that jump, sometimes you see a dip. Um sometimes you see a jump in places you don't expect it.
Well, I would expect a dip just over the summer, but that makes sense, because we're looking at it as.
Another thing to note is that the N W E A test changes its format of implementation, that's third grade. Um and so K through two, with a lot of uh reading, text for reading, it actually reads to the children and provides some additional audio support. By, but once they hit third grade, um students are expected to take, and actually, some, some districts take it in second grade. Um they take it on uh right there full blown, and so oftentimes you see a dip there, because the implementation of the test is different from what they can. Okay, thank you.
So now we move on to the action items, approval of human resource report. Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the human resource report as presented. Support. Any discussion? Mayor Wolcoffo. Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Adoption of the final twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve, adopt the final twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget as presented.
Any discussion? Wolcoffo? Jane?
Yes.
Herb? Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Approval of the twenty twenty-three tax levy.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the twenty twenty-two L forty-two-nine tax levy as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Mayor Wolcoffo? Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim? Yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Approval of food service employees' contract.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the food service employee contract as presented.
Any discussion? Mayor Wolcoffo? Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim? Yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Approval of A B M addendum.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the A B M addendum as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Mayor Wolcoffo? Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim? Yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Non-homestead operating mileage renewal resolution. Move the Brandon Board of Education, adopt the non-homestead operating mileage renewal resolution as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Mayor Wolcoffo? Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim? Yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
We missed one.
Yes.
The proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Oh. So moves the Brandon Board of Education, approve to adopt the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Mayor Wolcoffo? Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim? Yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, now, citizen input. Um before I read the names, I just wanna say this really quick for in-person. Um well, actually, in-person and virtually, when addressing the board, please recognize yourself by stating your name. Each statement shall be limited to three minutes, you can only speak once. The statements shall be directed at the board only, generally, the board will not respond to public, public comments during the meeting. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by their comments. To ensure due process and respect. Um. Oh. So um I will call these names, um Candace Harris. Wanna come up?
Good afternoon, my name is Candace Harris, someone you know me, someone you don't for those who don't. I have students at all three grade levels, I have Harvey sponsoring the middle school and the high school. I'm here to speak with you guys on bullying, to bring some stuff to your attention. I think that you guys need to look at some of your school policies. We have here that it says we're delivering the highest quality of education to every student so they can soar. Some of our students are soaring because of the bullying issues, it has to do with racism, um diversity. Just special needs kids, they're all being teased, there were a group of ten kids trying to jump my daughter. On the last day of school at McDonald's, um because she's different, she's the only female wrestler on the Brandon Middle School. She's a state champ, because yes, she can. Um it's the district's policy that we have an anti-bullying, anti-arrestment policy, but it's not being withheld by some of the schools. I know there's been a lot of changes made at the district level, um but it's something we need to work on. I'm here as an ally for you, if you need help, reach out. I know you guys probably are in your bubble, no offense, but if you need help, you have to reach out to people. And there's a lot of people that are here, uh the schools have been failing the kids by not responding, sometimes the kids feel when they report. That they're, they're victims more than once, they're victims by their bullies, and they're also victims by the school. Because they have to go through a round questioning and investigation, and while the investigation is going on, they're questioned more. And it makes the kids feel like they're not believed, and my daughter felt like a caged animal being attacked, and she attacked back. And that's not a good thing for violence to ever um be done. So I have a question, why are we allowing swastikas and K K K rhetoric in the middle school? We don't, but it's happening, kids are being called racial names, it shouldn't happen. Kids are being called fed when there's special needs, that's something that should. Kids are being called fed when there's special needs. That's something that shouldn't happen. And it's going to cause low grades, negative racial climate. And these kids, I don't know if you guys know, but Gen Alpha and Gen Z, they fight. They're not like us millennials. They fight. We try to train them not to, but they don't listen. Um my kids are no longer soldiers. I'm training them not to be, but I can't help it because they just they don't listen to me. So I'm here as an ally for the kids and for you guys. I'm standing in the middle saying, let me help you and you guys help me. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Connie, right?
Actually, I was pressed about Gwen Harris.
I'm sorry.
Gwen Harris.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. She signed in too. So Gwen Harris.
That's my son-in-law. He's not, he doesn't talk a lot, so he'd give me one of his minutes. I go over three minutes.
Well, we'll try to keep it at three.
My name is Gwen Harris and some of you know me, some of you don't. I am an active, when I say active, very active grandma in Brandon School. I have been active for over fifteen years. And um presently, right now, I'm the vice president of Harvey Swanson P T A along with other titles. Most of the kids in the Brandon School District, blacks and whites and Hispanics and whoever, they refer to me as granny or Mama G, and that's fine with me. I'm known to wipe off no dirty noses and do whatever is necessary for my kids. I love my Brandon School kids. But tonight I want to rest a racial landscape in Brandon School District. I'm being straightforward to you, passionate, and yet to the point. Um there's issues that concern me in this Brandon School District. Excuse me if I tear up, but it's very sensitive to me. And Harley knows me. These things are really sensitive to me. It's not a show. It's not a put on. Um the the word, the N word, the microaggressions, the unfair suspensions to choo to the people of color. These are things that have to be dealt with. Like my daughter kind of mentioned recently, my granddaughter, who just happens to be biracial and who happens to have an I E P in place, was repeatedly victimized by another student. And this happens to be a federal offense. I don't know if you guys know it, but it's a federal offense. And she was repeatedly bullied by this student for over two months constantly. The staff, the principal, and the social worker failed her miserably by making her feel threatened and unsafe in the Brandon School District. We have her saying here in Brandon Schools that all of our kids should feel safe. They should feel that they can excel beyond measure. They should not feel that they have to be fearful for coming to school. And they should feel that it's exciting to go to school. I'm going to school to learn, to be a part of something. But on the next to the last day of school, the same kid who had been bullying my granddaughter, he approached her and he called her the N word. I guess this day she felt like, hey, let's bring it on. And she felt helpless. She felt unsafe. She had gone to the social worker. We had had a meeting with the social worker. Nothing was done. It was swept under the rug. So my granddaughter, I'm not supporting, but she did. Don't get me wrong. She took it in her own hands. She took the matters in her own hands. She said, hey, y'all ain't doing nothing. I'm gonna show you what I'm gonna do. Clearly, violence is not the answer, but we do not have a precise plan here in Brandon to remedy this kind of problem. So Brandon School Board, it saddens me that we have as a community, we have failed our students. Our students should feel safe and they should feel that they are part of the district without feeling intimidated. But some of our parents, they're taking their children out of Brandon Schools. I don't know if you know it. We're trying to convince some of them to give them another chance. We're gonna try to work with them, do whatever we can do. God, I know that my heart is in the school district. My heart is for the kids. But we cannot keep being silent. We're silent and our kids are hurting. In over fourteen years of affiliation with Brandon Schools, I have never seen so much racial divide as I see now. Michelle Alexander spoke it very well when she said, we have not ended caste in America. We have merely redesigned it. I want you to think about that. And I got one minute. I'll be sending you. Title six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, or national origin in programs and activities operated by the recipients of federal funds. The Office of Civil Rights, which is O C R, works to ensure equal access to educational services. Tonight, I strongly urge you as board members to reach out to the Office of Civil Rights and work with them to devise a plan to help remedy this situation. It's gonna take all of us to bridge the gap between people of color and whites struggling to work with our race problems. We cannot say that it doesn't exist. We'd be dumb to say that, and we're not dumb. We're very smart. We're very intelligent. I want to close with this saying, I want to paraphrase what one of our great presidents said, John F. Kennedy. And this is paraphrasing according to Gwen. Ask not what your teachers and your parents can do, but board members, ask yourself tonight, what can I do for our students? That's hard to say.
All right, Mr. Warren.
Yeah, how y'all doing? Uh y'all ain't seen me in a while. Sure, y'all know who I am. I ain't seen some of y'all before, but I'm sure y'all done talked. But anyway, it was just brought to my attention just a few minutes ago. A teacher told my son, you're here to take this test to see if you'll be able to do gym next year. If you fail it, you won't be able to do it. I've never heard of that. So they're telling my kids lies just to see if he's better than what people think he is. That's that's crazy. But he's an I E P student, had five, four E's. No I E P student should have four E's. So I brought it, the advocate that I am, I brought it to the to their attention. And out of the blue, they just wiped all his E's away so he can be able to play sports. That's not teaching them. So I'm like, if I wasn't the advocate that I am, he would have not been able to play sports at all. But then they give me the runaround why the E's were raised because uh they, I can't remember what they said, but we'll talk. I need one of y'all to call me, so we and my my book is getting thicker and this documents, I've seen this from one of the I E P meetings. It was only one of our boards. If it wasn't written, it never happened. So I got my stuff documented. The same little boy, I'm talking about something different now, since elementary, I've been to y'all the boards. This is my eleventh board meeting. There's still nothing we have done about it. The same little boy from elementary has tormented my son. They called him now the sixth time. He's been called the N word. And now it's being taught, said that, oh, but DJ, my son told a kid to say it. I don't raise my kids like that. I'm a single father of four kids. My oldest just graduated from Brandon last year. He's at Fair State University all because of his dad. Nobody else. I had to take my daughter out of this district because she was called a black whore and cock picker. They did nothing about it. Got the police reports in here and everything. She graduated Oxford this year. She's going to college because of her daddy. And I want my other two to grow up in this district, but all this racism bullying has to stop. My son was just called N word with another student before school ended. And they're still investigating it, talking about, well, we don't see the the video where the boy was crossing paths and this and that. But if my son, my son, he called a kid a monkey playing around. What happened to monkey in the middle, missing that? My son never knew that was another racial slay saying. And he got in trouble for that. But my kid be called the N word and nothing's done about it. But they did take her on the incident and only because the security guard. That boy walked into the office and said, oh, I did a deal. My son got choked by another kid. Hair pulled on the ground. I didn't know nothing about it. So um he if the security guard wasn't there, that boy walked into the office and said, oh, it was DJ that did it. And the security guard walked in behind him and was like, no, he's lying. I watched it on the tape. DJ had nothing to do with it. And this has happened to my son before. And he's got in trouble for stuff he's never done. And I got teachers that said DJ's never done it. So and then the security guard told me, he was also called the N word by that little boy. When the school finally told me about that incident, they never brought up the N word. That this bullying has to stop. I keep telling these people, my son, and I just had to take him to the hospital overnight at eleven-minute seizures. And it says due to stress and he had it started in the school. School never caught contact and it's on this. So and the special education nurse, she got the information now. I gave it to her. And they they're putting him with parapros that are disrespecting him. And like I tell them, my son is not a saint, but y'all have to do y'all part too. Contact me. I'm a I'm a very strong advocate. I'm a, I don't take up for my kids if they're acting up. There's times where I went to throw the white flag at him. I don't mind, but he needs somebody strong that's gonna be there for him. And y'all that can make me out to be a this is crazy psycho dude. Oh, he goes from zero to a hundred real quick. Oh, you gotta tell the whole story. Why does he go that quick? Because I'm not being heard. My son is not being accommodated the right way. It's gotta stop.
Thank you. We have it. We will contact you.
I appreciate it because the next step is state complaint. I filed two against this district and they were found in violation. I'm not trying to do all that. I just want the best for my son. That's all.
Um next, we need to remove the session. Um can I get a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve to enter closed session for the purpose of security planning as presented.
Support.
Any second? Roll call vote? Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.